Please rise to the bridge.
Yours flagrant.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Manser?
Here.
Raker?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports, do we have any other than from city clerk?
Some meetings to announce. The beautification commission will meet on Tuesday, September 1st at 7:00 PM. The historic district commission will meet on Tuesday, August 25th at 7:00 PM. And the zoning board of appeals will meet on Tuesday, September 1st at 9:00 AM. And they will all take place here at City Hall.
Anyone else? Adoption of the agenda?
Before we move motion for the adoption of the agenda, I have a question. I'd like in regards to, I'd like to ask in regards to item 13A. This is a executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege correspondence. And I'm wondering why the need to have a executive session without saying what the topic is, what is the need and who called for the executive session on this?
I did.
Based on?
Most attorney, most of our memorandums are attorney-client privileged and we do go into executive session to discuss them. And that's why the Open Meetings Act has a specific exemption for that purpose. Now, once you discuss it, I would assume on the next meeting, it would be announced as to what procedure is going to be followed.
But what is this, what are the sensitivities that can't be discussed publicly in regards to this said subject? And can I even mention what the subject is?
I don't care.
Apparently you do because it's not on the agenda. Okay, well, the item is discussion of the charter, give the clarification, please. The discussion on the charter to fill the vacancy. Now, why do we have to go behind closed doors to discuss that is beyond me. I mean, usually for my seven years plus in elected service, I usually go behind closed doors to discuss matters of sale and purchase of property, personnel review, and labor negotiations or lawsuits. I don't see this falling into any of that.
Well, there's probably 11 categories under the Open Meetings Act. One of them is attorney-client privilege correspondence.
Sure.
And that's what this is.
I get that. It's a very big blanket.
If you don't want it in private session, then I guess if you have enough support, then have it removed.
Okay, as long as I can do that, then I will make that motion to remove item 13A from the executive session and request that it become item 10D.
Second.
Well, I understand, I don't need a second, I can modify the agenda.
Oh, that's true. Not from executive session?
No.
You're not taking something off a consent.
Okay, you're right, pardon me, I retract.
Well, you got a second anyway. Roll call.
What, so, we're gonna, instead of talking about the process, we're just gonna talk about now?
No. No, what is happening is we are not going to talk about the process publicly, which is the charter, and I think it's fairly clear, and I think it should be discussed publicly, out in the open, plain and simple.
I think it's-
And not prepping some consensus.
There's no prepping-
No, not prepping some consensus so that we come back and later on disclose it.
Well, there's no consensus gathering, nor is there any prepping. I think the attorney has a right to ask, to explain this to us, and then we can put it on the next meeting to discuss what the decision is and how we're going to fill, which is very clear as far as I'm concerned.
But we can't make a decision in the executive session anyway.
No, but he wants to share with us, talk to us.
It's not, it's not a matter of making a decision, it's a matter of information. And if we take this opportunity in an executive session to give out all of the information for us to absorb that information, then it can become public knowledge. There's no reason to make the public aware of this way before we are aware of it, and we have an opportunity to discuss it in a manner that would be appropriate for the commission. So, I would be very much against changing any part of this executive-
What does be gained by going into executive session out of review of the public?
Information gathering for those of us who have to make a decision in the near future.
Information gather, I mean, it was presented to us, it's pretty straightforward.
There may be even more things that he has to discuss with us. I mean, what we have on paper may have additional information, additional explanation. So, at this point, I would say let him, as the attorney, determine whether or not this should be executed, and he has determined that it should be executed. So, I would suggest we go ahead and go with our attorney. After all, he is our attorney and we're paying him for it.
I get that, but we also, this is a very broad topic as far as attorney-client privilege. You can basically put anything on attorney-client privilege, as long as you talk about that specifically behind closed doors. My point is, I don't think this needs a closed-door review at all.
Well, that's your opinion, our attorney has asked for it.
He's asked for, but is it absolutely necessary?
Well, apparently he must feel it is, otherwise it isn't on here.
Apparently I'm asking him and not you.
You know.
So, maybe he can answer the question.
He has.
Why, what is necessary, other than you can do it? Just because you can do it doesn't mean you should do it.
Well, there's things that I would like to discuss regarding that, the correspondence, that there are maybe other alternatives that I may discuss. All I have is a recommendation and the opinion of-
But what sensitivities should be, should, I mean, no, seriously, what sensitivities-
There's no big conspiracy.
Exactly, that's my point.
People are going to-
That's my point. That's my point.
Okay.
I think that this is a topic that members of the public are extremely interested in.
And they will, they will be advised. There's nothing secretive going on. He wants to talk to us about the process. This is all going to come out when we have to bring it out, and how we're gonna do this. But I'd like to hear what else he has to say.
So, the public knows the item in the correspondence relates to filling the vacancy of Commissioner Blash, filling his seat. So, the public will be well advised of the process of that long before his seat will be filled.
The way it's written, that's some pretty-
Stick vote.
If I can suggest something, you suggested that it be put to 10D under consent, I don't think that's what you wanted.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
I said you want 9E.
Yes, thanks for clarity. 9E.
Hey, stick vote.
Bunton?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
No.
Hill?
No.
Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Tie vote?
Failed.
So, then, here's a question for you. When it comes to this item under executive session, when we move to executive session, we could decide not to move to executive session and this item would then fail. Is that correct?
No.
I'm not, I'm can, this is direct to the city attorney.
Pardon me.
Someone, I presume someone will make a motion to go into executive session. And if that motion is seconded-
Tied?
It will go into executive-
If it's tied?
Yeah, no, we think if it's, if it's tied, then it'll fail.
Okay, that's my, that's the point.
Put both items to a fail.
Yes.
And that's fine with me. Okay, I just wanna make that clear.
So, you're willing to, okay, never mind, we'll get there. Dare not say a word, let's move on. Adoption, I think we're looking at the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
No.
Raker?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
All right, public participation, this is the time that you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule.
Excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
You just voted to adopt the agenda, correct?
Correct.
And what was the vote on that?
Four to two.
Four to two.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay. Well, if the agenda is adopted-
Then the exec is adopted.
Then the executive session is adopted.
Correct. May I say that without getting head tapped off?
But if you-
Okay, public participation, please, come forth.
Change the subject, just correct, do something. Okay, little different, I had something night, but getting the news about Mr. Blash as I did, my other stuff can wait. I just wanted to give a little history lesson to some of those who weren't around all the time that I've been, that Gary's been, because I've been around doing this stuff for 44 years. I know how Ms. Fournier feels, but wait till she gets to 44 years, she'll talk about her sidewalks and we'll know. Mr. Blash was one of the sorriest, sorest victims of this city I've ever seen. Mr. Blash suffered because he was honest. There was a day when Superintendent, what was her name, Blanche Fraser, and I happened to be there, she came in his office, she brings in, oh, she didn't want him to send out the assessment notices, you know how you get them every year, because the vote was coming up on the millage for the school, and she's like blathering, and he said, I'm sorry, they're going out. It's matter of law. I don't do it, the law tells, well, you can't do it, I'm gonna tell this one, I'm gonna tell that one, well, he mailed them anyway. And that was just one of many instances where people came down on him because they didn't want him to do what he knew he should do, because it was part of his job, and anyway, he can read and it's in the law, and he's sworn to protect his job. Then there came the particularly egregious situation back in the 90s, 91, somewhere in there, where we were again between city managers, it seems to be just like a musical chairs with city managers. And at the time, we had someone, Mr. Blash was in his interim, and the seat was up for grabs, and both he and Earl Rickman ran. And Mr. Blash wasn't pleasing Mr. Anton very well with the way Mr. Blash wanted to do things in town and a few other people. And as it so turned out, and I think Mr. Deal wasn't happy with Mr. Blash either. In fact, yes, it was him. And they just didn't even consider Mr. Rickman or Mr. Blash, despite the fact Mr. Blash was a lifetime resident, went to the schools, served the city. He's not good enough, he won't do what he's told, he won't play the party game, he won't swallow the party line. So, whom did they hire? A guy that turned out to be a sex pervert, Dan Bishop. They brought Dan Bishop in from, remember? Uh-huh, still had the hayseed in his teeth, coming in here, had been in Fowerville, wow, you can't even blink and know you're through Fowerville, I mean. And they brought him in, and I thought he was a little weird, and so did some other people, and certainly didn't fit here, but that's who they brought in instead of Mr. Blash, he'll do whatever. And I noticed a few things, and a few other people noticed a few things, but everybody were, well, later on after he left here and went to Albion, if you Google up Dan Bishop and Albion, you'll find out that he just couldn't keep his hands off one of the receptionists there, and lost his job and a few other things, and so, that's how we treated Mr. Blash. Oh, my God, as a city, we need to apologize to him. Even though it was just a certain few people within the city that smelled a little, that treated him badly, it was terrible. And Barb did her best to take care of him, I remember that.
Thank you.
So, if you could be so kind as to remember that when you do his-
Yes.
Resolution proclamation. Because he was an honest man.
Thank you. Is the beeper not working?
It just stopped right as it hit me on that.
Anyone else?
Laura Fournier, 70, Lodwick. While I was at least happy that something's being done about the sidewalks, I certainly wasn't happy about only the 50,000, but it was a start. But now to spread that beginnings of a program over two seasons seems ridiculous. We've got a lot out there. It is a hazard in this city. These sidewalks are a hazard. I was going to bring my daughter-in-law so she could all see her scars. This is, we should at least put the pressure on or make it a priority, get the blessed, do what we can this year to get these things done, not put it off until next spring. And there was a comment made in Commissioner's comments last, at the last meeting about the budget and the tax, the raise in taxes. And as some of my neighbors said, that was like rubbing salt in the wounds. Yes, the charter amendment was voted in, but no one expected the entire amount to be put in place in this year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dolores Kusimia, 250 Euclid. I stand with Mrs. Fournier on the sidewalks, but also I have also a complaint about the cement. The houses on my street, Euclid Avenue, I had to go to every house to drop off pamphlets for Neighborhood Watch. At least seven or eight houses, either the steps are broken, they're collapsing, there's no rails, very dangerous. And most of these homes are owned by landlords who are not taking care of it. So, who's gonna end up fixing it if someone gets hurt? My mailman said he delivered a mail to a house on Mosher, I'm not gonna give the address on cable, but I will give to you personally. He went up one step and his foot went through the cement. And this just happened a few days ago. So, what's gonna happen to these steps? They're not be, they're just being ignored. Now, since the sidewalks are getting after, let's do the cement too. But the cement, we're not responsible for the houses, the landlords are, and these are mostly landlord rentals. No handrails, broken handrails, steps are missing. You can't go up these steps. So, I will give you the address because I don't want it up the side.
Okay, we'll take the address.
And I'm walking better.
Yes, you are, doing really well.
Thanks. Yeah, I see it now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Stan 567 Eldridge, I wasn't planning on coming today because I've been stuck in traffic for three hours, but I did get a phone call earlier and I wanna clear something up. I've been accused of something again I did not do. As you know, I have not been here for what, two months? I'm busy, I'm sick, I'm on medication, I don't wanna deal with the political crap. However, this last thing I was accused of, I did not do. If I'm gonna send an email, I'm gonna sign it. I do not send emails, I do not sign things. And then, second, now that I'm up here, I did contact the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office about a building we have in danger, which Mike told me about a few weeks ago. And also, we all know, I was not happy about the house being torn down on Cass Avenue, which was part of our history. We have no control over stopping this, I know, but I'm actually contacting an officer to see what we can do for preventing any other future buildings from being torn down or homes. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Sharon Demming, and I live at 8510 Charles Court in Sterling Heights. I'm also a district leader with the Humane Society of the United States, and I'm here this evening to talk to you about an initiative that I've been working on here in Mont Clemens, and that is the Gibraltar Trade Center, who has recently ended the retail sales of cats and dogs. They have signed on to the United States, the Humane Society of the United States Puppy Friendly Pet Store pledge, and they will now only be featuring adoptable cats and dogs from the Macomb County Animal Shelter. We will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, August 29th, and we've invited key executives, Mayor Dempsey will be there, thank you very much, Director, Executive Director Hackel, Chief Randazzo, and Representative Marilyn Lane will also be there. We will also be extending invitations to the commissioners, and we are hoping that you will be able to attend also if your schedules allow. We are very, very excited about this initiative, we've already kicked it off, we've had three adoption events already. Last Saturday, Macomb County Animal Control brought five dogs, and out of the five, four of them were adopted, which is just an incredible adoption rate for one event. So, thank you for your time this evening, and we hope that we will see you on August 29th.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Pam Sordow, 8758 Deerwood Road, Clarkston, and I'm so happy to see you, it's been a little while, and I hope you're all doing well. Founder of Puppy Mill, a harness to southeast Michigan, and I am real excited about the new adoption events going on, I hope you all can make it. It's actually at 12 o'clock, 12 to 1 is the ribbon-cutting, so she'll send you an invitation, but I hope you all can be there, it's, I think it's a very significant, a step in the right direction for the trade center. So, I wanted to get, just give you an update on our campaign with Polywood. You may have heard that their lease was not renewed in March, so there's no longer anyone selling puppies in the trade center. That was actually as of March, they did not renew their lease. The owner did move to a store, storefront on Grashit near Royal Cafe, and she's still selling puppies. It's by appointment only through the online ads in the newspaper, and we were still getting complaints as of June, sick dogs were being sold. So, you might have also heard on the news that our attorney is suing the store for alleged fraud, knowingly selling sick animals. She has 31 plaintiffs in a lawsuit. It's not a class action lawsuit, it's individuals all coming together on the lawsuit. And if you know anyone that has bought a sick animal from the store in the last six years, we can still amend the lawsuit. And primarily to stop her. Many people said they weren't interested in recourse, but they really didn't want it to happen to another family. They went through a lot of heartbreak and veterinary expenses. So, we do have 31 plaintiffs and some hearings coming up, and I also wanted to mention that Warren, we're also having a ribbon-cutting in Warren. The Greenwood Pets and Plants was another chronic pet store. Polywood and Greenwood were actually the worst pet stores with the most complaints with the state, with the Michigan Department of Agriculture. They closed their store, cost the city $20,000 in 2013, and they're looking at our ordinance proposal that we brought to you before called the Humane Pet Acquisition Proposal. It is on their agenda for review. And with the Home Rule, Home Rule City Act, I did do some research, and some cities in the country, we have 87 jurisdictions now that have passed the ordinance, there is a way to get around that, and it's, instead of a full ban on the retail sales, you can do a restriction base. And I would love to send you an example of an option for your city, just to prevent it from happening again. So, currently, she's still selling, and we're looking for a cease and desist August 27th, August 24th. So, I hope you can make it to the ribbon-cutting, and I think it's kind of good news that she's no longer selling out of the trade center, and the shelter dogs have an option now. Basically, the shelter can be open 27 days a week now. They had restricted hours for adoption, but with the trade center location, that's gonna bring shelter pets, you know, available to a lot of traffic. So, I hope you can make it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Danielle Tierpikoff, 54, Dorothea. I am so glad to hear the news about the animals, because it was really sad how they lived in such deplorable conditions and how people were adopting sick animals. I can't understand how anyone who takes care of animals would ever permit anything like that. As for me being a proud pet owner of a calico cat, and I had dogs in the past, growing up, I had dogs and cats, I could not imagine that, because when it comes to any pet I had, they were always kept in a clean environment, and also, they were paid attention to, well taken care of, pampered, much loved. And I think people should have a right to know if an animal is sick. They shouldn't just sell somebody a sick animal. But I'm just glad something's been done about this. And I'm also glad to hear about how they're opening other places, and hope it's a nice day for the ribbon-cutting too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle Weiss, 18200 Terror Drive, Clinton Township. I just wanted to announce to the residents, to remind them that the last Uptown Friday Night Concert will be this Friday, the 21st, from 7:30 to 9:00, with the trilogy being The Band, and they will be sponsored by the Obebo Restaurant. Also, the last Nashville in the Neighborhood Concert will be Wednesday, August 26th, with Mickey Guyton from 7:30 to 9:00. And want to remember, want to remind everyone that the Wednesday Farmer's Market's running now through September 17th. We now have two new events that we're gonna be presenting in collaboration with the Macomb County Economic Planning Department, as well as Clinton Township. The first will be on August 30th, we're doing a Bikes, Burgers, and Brews, which is a slow roll. And for those of you that don't know what that is, it's a group of bicycle riders that meet at a designated location, take a unique route throughout the community. Slow rolls for everyone, all ages, all skill levels, and every type of bike. They will start in our downtown, and they will advance over to our new section of our bike path at Shady Side, and then go on to Metro Beach to the Point, turn, and come back into our city. Once they get back here, we have all different types of vendors that'll be here in the Roscoe Parking Lot, as well as they'll receive maps so that they can continue on through the downtown to visit our restaurants and our downtown businesses. We also, with Clinton Township, we will be doing a murder mystery that'll be on October the 10th. It's sort of like a clue game with your, it's a version of a live game with actors, riddles, scavenger hunting, and problem solving. We're very excited about collaborating with these two different groups, and we hope to do more events with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along here, administrative responses, questions or issues raised in previous meetings.
Thank you, Mayor, just one item that I'm gonna talk about from a concern that was raised at the last meeting. A resident had thanked the DPS for improvement work done at what was referred to as Wilson Park, which is renamed as Kenneth D. Kirkland Memorial Park, but had also raised concerns about weeds and paper issues at the park. The Department of Public Services via Jeff Wood and the rest of the people on staff there has addressed these concerns, and those items have been taken care of, and that's the only item that I had for this week.
Commissioner Manser?
City Manager Brown, I believe Ms. Fournier brought up the sidewalks last week, and I'm wondering, you know, we did put that in the budget, the budget was passed in June, and so where are we at with hiring a contractor or having the DPS start marking flags?
Yeah, we, I thought that that was addressed last week, and that's why I didn't bring up the rest, anything new, but to cover what I talked about at that point in time and add some information as requested by the commissioner here, yes, we do have that $50,000 set aside, we've done some preliminary work in terms of administration, in terms of putting together a notice form, tweaking it, refining it. There's been talk with the Community Development Department and myself, as well as the city attorney at a few different points in time. So, we've got a revision to that, that form that we're ready to roll with. In terms of the contractor question you raised, we're not talking about doing anything with a specialized contractor that was set up for that particular funding. We have a general-purpose contractor for contract, for concrete work in the city, that we're going to utilize that contractor to handle the sidewalk work, because as part of that bid process, that kind of work was bid out, and we have cost factors for that that we're gonna utilize. So, we're set to go, basically. In fact, we were going to have a discussion today about next steps to kick off the project, and because of my lack of availability, it didn't happen today, but we're gonna take care of that tomorrow.
Okay.
So, we should be moving on that pretty quickly. And if I missed anything, you can-
Approve what the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
General Business, 9A, introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of property located at 269 North Grossbeck and 295 North Grossbeck from MU, multiple use, to GC, general commercial. Need a motion.
To approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conditional rezoning of 269 North Grossbeck and 295 North Gross- the conditional rezoning of 269 North Grossbeck and 295 North Grossbeck from MU Multi-Use to GC General Commercial. Support.
On August 4th, 2015, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on a rezoning request for property located at 269 and 295 North Grossbeck. The request would rezone the property from multi-use to general commercial. The properties are located on the west side of Grossbeck Highway across from the Mount Clemens Community Center and athletic fields. The master plan has this property designated as commercial and office. The general commercial zoning would allow for a greater number of commercial uses for the site. The Planning Commission passed a 7-0 motion recommending the City Commission approve this request. As a further FYI, there were no comments against the proposed rezoning at the Planning Commission meeting. One neighboring property owner did express their support for this move.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Raker?
Do we have an idea of, usually when there's a rezone request, there's something brewing of some sort? There's an idea? Or not?
Again, this would allow for a greater number of commercial uses. I know the property owner is looking at, the one is automobile service related uses or potential car lot. Again, those uses would also need special land use approval before the Planning Commission, before they could be allowed to occur there. That's the primary reason.
That's notwithstanding this change, that's even with this change, they would have to come before Planning Commission or not after that?
They're not even eligible for those uses as multi-use zoning. General commercial, they would be as a special land use. And again, this is the property, if you remember, a business owner that opened a Jazzercise place, this is the property, the building that is requested rezoning.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay. 9B. Approval of the fiscal year 2016 Purchase of Service POS Operating Agreement between Suburban Mobility Authority for the Regional Transportation and the City of Mount Clemens for the Mount Clemens Dial Ride. Need a motion?
Move to approve the fiscal year 2016 Purchase of Services Operating Agreement between Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation and the City of Mount Clemens as presented and to authorize the execution of the contract by the appropriate city officials.
Support.
Attached is the fiscal year 2016 Purchase of Service Contract Between Smart and City of Mount Clemens for the Mount Clemens Dial Ride. The contract outlines the operating agreements between Smart and Mount Clemens Dial Ride. Please note, Smart will continue to subsidize a project up to $41,284 in municipal and community credits for operating costs. Exhibit A of this contract reflects the fare increase for full fare from $2 to $3, one-way half fare from $1 to $1.50, and youth fare from $1.50 to $2. Senior citizen fares will not experience a rate increase. As an addendum to that, as an added piece of information, just to make sure that we're clear on this, that is technically true. The senior rate is not changing. However, we did discuss at a prior meeting and it's reflected in the budget, that we were going to change the rides that are known as the Senior Shopper from 75 cents to $1. That's a bit of a misnomer from the standpoint of it's not exclusively seniors. As you know, it serves a variety of locations throughout the city and you do not have to be a senior to get that fare. So we were going to change the fare for that Senior Shopper tour trip from 75 cents to $1, which would be consistent with the senior fare.
Is it a round trip? One-way?
That's one-way. So, I wanted to make that clarification. That was a potential question mark that I thought was raised by using the language that was used in the agenda item. Exhibit B is a summary of the budget. There are no changes in the budget from the prior year. Exhibit C reflects the City of Mount Clemens will be receiving three new buses provided by Smart to replace three of the older buses in the fleet. This contract has been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office as well as the city's insurance carrier.
That's good. Commissioner Raker?
Was the fare increase, was that throughout all of Smart's operating area or was that specific just to Mount Clemens?
That 75 cents?
No, the change from, I think you said $1 to $1.50, two to three?
It's through our, it's for the service provided through the Dial Ride program, so it's for our service area?
Just specific to us?
Correct.
Okay, because, that falls in line with what I've been asking for as far as a fee increase?
Right.
Over the last couple of years.
We did discuss this all at prior point in time.
Commissioner Hill?
I thought I read later in the contract that there was no charge for seniors and disabled people.
You know, Paige? I mean, there's different points in times where it talks about things like, on number 20, it talks about the fares shall include the provision of half fares to elderly and handicapped individuals, so I don't think they were free.
I'm trying to find, oh. Oh, we're, on Exhibit A, says elderly shall mean person 65 years of age or older. And a definition of disabled. And then it said, no charge for children four and under.
Right.
Then, well, I thought it was in here that it said there was no charge for seniors.
Shouldn't be.
I think it said no increase. That's, wasn't that the discussion?
No increase in the first.
Yeah, the cover in the agenda item, right.
Okay, I swear I saw in there somewhere where.
Well, we'll double check. It should not be if it's there, so I will make sure that we don't have.
Jeff might have some clarification.
It does discuss in there that transfers for disabled riders and seniors are free.
Page 27, at the bottom of the page, it says, "All transfers for full fare riders cost 25 cents. Disabled riders and seniors are free."
For the transfer.
You don't have to pay for a transfer.
Oh, okay, okay. Just clarifying.
Commissioner Manser?
I have a couple of questions, Jeff. This, the terms of contract on page 15 say, or, yeah, 15 say that it became effective July 1st. Did we sign an agreement already or are we on like a 30-day waiting period, extension, something?
Well, the fact of the matter is, Jeff commented on this today. This is record turnaround time for this particular contract. It's usually multiple months past this point in time. And yes, it has always kind of applied retroactively to July 1st to allow us to continue to provide service in the meanwhile. So, yes, it's going to be, it's continued under the terms of the old contract because we hadn't yet received the contract.
So the old fares are in place until we sign the new contract?
Correct.
Okay. And I have a question about the driver's training. You've got any feedback? There's three different plans of driver's training here and it looks like, you know, a lot of different pricing on that. Page 16, bottom. Are the cities on the hook to provide that training at those costs?
Yes, but we do our own training in-house that complies with Smart.
Okay.
So we're not seeing those, we're not subject to those. They're just saying that we must provide some training and we provide that in-house.
And if we don't, that's how Smart will provide it. I guess is the difference.
And I'm looking at, the page number's blacked out. It looks like page 18. It talks about, under Item D, Smart retains the sole right to determine the style, color, location, et cetera, while painting logos, et cetera, et cetera. And I just wondered about, can we utilize these buses to put up? You know, when you look at the big Smart buses going down, you see all kinds of advertising and banners on them. You know, can we utilize those buses to put up like, you know, the Maiden Michigan Show? Can we utilize those buses to put up a placard in the window for Bike Burgers Brew, whatever? Say it.
Bikes Burgers and Brews.
Bikes Burgers and Brews. Do we have the option to utilize these buses that run through our city to advertise things like that?
Long story short on that is the use of those buses for paid advertising is not allowed and frowned on by Smart. But if you wanted to use it for publicity on an event or say something from a, you know, that's related to a city activity, that's a little bit more of a gray area and they typically won't give us a hard time about that. But if it's, but if it's an advertisement, revenue generating, that's an issue.
But because these are free events in the city for city residents and this is the city transportation service, whether it's the Senior Shopper or the Dial Ride, I would suggest that we kind of take a look at that. I mean, we could start advertising the Santa Parade at this point, free on that bus, or any of the new events that, you know, Ms. Weiss talked about, you know, tonight. That's just one point I would like to make.
And my detailed knowledge of that is dated, so we'd have to double check that. But that was the understanding I had at first and likely has not changed, but we'll double check and if that's something we're interested in pursuing, we can do it.
I think we would like to check on that. Do you need me to make a motion for that?
No, not at all.
Okay. And then, my last question for, is I, under Attachment A, I'm looking at the collection for no-shows. The percentage of no-shows to total cost should not exceed 5% of the totals on a weekly basis. So I kind of went back and I have my 2013 and 2014 statistics. And between 2013 and 14, there was an increase in the number of no-shows to 300, of 314. There was also in that timeframe, a decrease in the number of riders of 750. If you want my stats, I got them. So what I'm wondering is, how are we collecting this, the no-show fare? And do we have, you know, have we suspended any riding privileges for people that have consistently failed to show?
We have suspended services, yes.
Okay. And is this the no-show fee for a dollar, do we have a system set up to notify the bus drivers that they should be collecting that extra fare?
Yes, that's done through the dispatch.
Okay. Because when I look at the annual totals of no-shows for 14, just the no-shows, not the cancellations, but the no-shows were 1,417. And in 2013, the no-shows were 1,731. So I guess that would be, you know, that would help make up for some of the cost that the city is taking out of the general fund to pay for this.
Right, yes, we are definitely enforcing that penalty.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call. Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
9C, Adoption of Resolution Supporting House Bills 4725 and 4726 of 2015. Need a motion? Move to adopt?
You go ahead. Go ahead.
Move to adopt the attached resolution supporting House Bill 4725 and 4726 of 2015 as presented.
Second.
So attached is a resolution supporting House Bills 4725 and 4726 of 2015, which would seek to repeal the Fireworks Safety Act and ban the sale and use of consumer fireworks with the exception of fireworks displays that are authorized as part of a permitting process by each individual municipality as a function of local control. Just a little bit of added information on this, this has been a constant problem for municipalities across the state. It's been the subject of a lot of discussion at MACRO, the Macomb Area Communities for Regional Opportunities. And this is just an effort to try to have an impact on this and try to bring it to the attention of the legislature that this is creating a burden on local communities and creating issues for local residents. One more added piece of information, MACRO has also discussed the possibility of taking action on Sky Lanterns, items that you light a candle inside and they take flight because of the heated air that rises inside of the outside body of that item. That's something that MACRO just passed an item on at the last meeting where they're encouraging a countywide ban on this. And there are individual communities that are undertaking that ban, but obviously the issue being, you know, they might take flight somewhere else and still land in another community that has a ban and cause problems with damaged property potentially. So MACRO did pass something asking for a countywide move on that. In the meanwhile, we can consider doing that as well. That's more of an ordinance change and would be a little bit more complicated and that'll come forward in the future, assuming there's interest.
Commissioner Manser?
I think I brought this up before. These bills were sponsored by Henry Inez out of Sterling Heights, a Democrat out of Sterling Heights. He introduced this on June 16th of 2015. And what this essentially does is it repeals the 2011 fireworks law that State Rep Harold Ho put together. It changes the, what residents, you know, can buy. They can't buy the bigger fireworks, they can't buy, you know, and shoot them off and outside of local regulations. So this is a good step and I applaud City Manager Brown for, you know, putting this together.
Anyone else? Commissioner Raker?
Here at this table, actually, you're correct, Commissioner, it was you that brought this to our attention, although I'm sure there were several days during the summer where we all were kind of reflecting on it in some way, shape, or form. But you did bring to bear the fact that the gentleman, Mr. Inez, Inez, Henry, who was a former firefighter, was supporting these bills. You brought it to our attention. I'm sure the City Manager heard it from several different venues and I'm glad that you responded in kind and got it on here. And I am in full support of whatever ordinance modification or amendment we need to do in regards to that, the Sky Lanterns. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Okay, Approval Purchase of Payments and Invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Okay, Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
City Managers Report.
A few items this Commission meeting. Website update, this week we've worked to correct discrepancies between where pages on the city website display and what the website displayed as the actual addresses for those pages. These discrepancies did not really greatly impact the usability of our site. However, these corrections do result in a little bit more continuity and a more professional construction for the website. Anybody out there that's been utilizing the website, if you happened to catch us when we were making some of those changes, you could have ran into a situation where links were temporarily broken or website pages were temporarily unavailable. If that happened, I apologize, but they were pretty brief in duration and those items have been fixed. As mentioned previously, the city is interested in feedback on the new website. We've talked about it here at the Commission meeting. To further publicize this fact, we've taken advantage of a new add-on capability that's on the website, which allows us to put a sort of a banner announcement, which appears on each page of the website. So no matter if you're just somebody that only comes to the city clerk's page, you're going to see this announcement. Or if you're somebody that visits another page on the website, you'll still see this announcement. And that announcement contains the same information that was discussed at the prior meeting, which is if you have any feedback on the city website, please contact us either using my email address, sbrown@cityofmountclemens.com. That's sbrown@cityofmountclemens.com. Or call us by telephone, 586-469-6818, extension 7. Another bit of a repeat announcement on career opportunities with the city. We have previously announced that we were seeking outside candidates for several positions in the city. That set of positions includes the original Finance Director/Treasurer position, the Human Resources Director position, and the Economic Development Specialist position. But a new position has been added on after being posted internally and not having any candidates. That being another planner position that would work in Brian Tingley's Community Development Department. And I also wanted to point out that we're interested in anybody who's willing or interested in applying for these positions. And we're also interested in any feedback or any word of mouth that anybody can do. So if you've got a cousin, you've got a friend that's in the business, by all means, share the information about these availabilities of positions in the City of Mount Clemens. Also, we've kind of cast a wide net on this. We spent a great deal of money on these solicitations because we wanted to have as We spent a great deal of money on these solicitations because we wanted to have as big a pool of candidates as, as we could get. We've advertised for these positions on the Career Builder, Career Builder website, the Monster website, the Detroit News, the Detroit Free Press, the Michigan Municipal League website, as well as the first three positions were also advertised on the Michigan Chronicle. So that's a pretty, a large amount of advertising that we've done and we are interested in getting as many people that would like to work with us in those capacities as possible to come forward and make an application. So if you can pass that word around, it would be to the city's benefit and we would appreciate it. The next item is roadwork on Market Street. Initial work on the Mill and Cap repaving project of Market Street from northbound Grashit to North Avenue has started. It basically started to some extent last week, it ramped up a little bit this week. We've been getting some feedback from people that were, were a little bit surprised by seeing the actions or the activity getting ready for this particular job. Notices were put out to property owners on, on the street that will be affected, both to the owner address as well as to the occupant address, so to the building addresses on Market Street, as well as to the individual owners of those properties wherever their addresses may be. Further information on this is that it's going to be funded through the Traffic Improvement Program through SEMCOG and that was identified by SEMCOG. And the other item is that we are not going to close Market Street to through traffic, I mean, to, to traffic at any time. It is closed to through traffic, but it's not closed to any form of traffic. So if we have employees on the street that need to get to work, if we have customers that want to get to businesses on Market Street, they will still be able to do so. But just like with any construction project, if you can avoid the area and you have no reason necessarily go through that area, it could be to your benefit to have a quicker ride, if you will, by going on a different route. The last thing that I wanted to mention was the mass transit evaluation process for Macomb County. The Regional Transit Authority continues to hold meetings and otherwise evaluate the possibility of providing rapid transit on Grashit, including through the city of Mount Clemens. Most recently, a bus tour, the possible route was provided on a SMART bus. Participants visited possible station locations through Macomb County, evaluated the pros and cons and discussed other aspects of the process, of the project as well. Mount Clemens was a source of a lot of discussion throughout this event, quite frankly. We've received a couple of handouts covering possible alignments in Mount Clemens and proposed station locations comparing different options for how the transit would be provided. So in terms of the alignments, for example, you know, is it going to be on both legs of Grashit in each direction? Is it going to be on one leg of Grashit that's going to be made two-way? Is it going to be on Main Street through the downtown area or is it not? So those are some of the different options that were discussed at the meeting and handouts were provided. Mayor and Commission should have received a package that details those handouts. If you have any questions on it, please feel free to, to let me know. Interested citizens can visit the following section of the RTA website if they're interested in more information on this process. It's located at rta michigan.org/best-projects-grashit-avenue. And you can look that up on the city website, we'll provide that. You can contact us at the four six nine six eight one eight, extension seven. But again, it's rta michigan.org/best-projects-grashit-avenue. And then one more item that I added on later today, the statistical reports for July will be forthcoming shortly. They were complicated a little bit by a new report that was provided by the FVOP for their actions in the Utilities Department, their activities in the Utilities Department for last month. And I'm going to try to get that in a way that fits in with the rest of the reporting. So you'll see that within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And that's all I had this evening.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Mensah.
I had, I had someone ask me about combining the Economic Development Specialist and the Planner Position into one position. Do you just want to speak to that so I, so that I can give an answer or so that they can hear the answer?
Well, I mean, from the standpoint of the way they function, there are different functions that are going to be involved there. Planner's going to be somebody that's going to be intricately involved with, with taking some of the day-to-day workload off of Brian Tingly. The Economic Development Specialist is related in that effect, but also is intended to be a bit of an outreach for attracting businesses to the community and things of that nature. I don't know if Brian wants to supplement that with anything to flesh that out, but they are different positions.
Different position, you know, the Planner Position is going to be focusing on more land use items, master plan, doing work with the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, more zoning administration, you know, as opposed to pure economic development activities.
Okay. Information's out there now. Anyone else? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, two things. I would like to say, I wasn't here at the last meeting when Commissioner Blash had turned in his resignation. I would like to say that I'm out in my yard all the time and that at least once a week, Commissioner Blash would come up the street and I knew it was him because he had his license plate, the chairman, on it. And when I saw him coming up, I knew he'd pull up and he would stop. And if it wasn't talking about city business, he was just talking, see how I was doing. So I will miss his stopby as that came at least once a week. Also, I had a call regarding a house that was a rat trap on Grashit, so I went and looked at it. I went and asked the co-inspector here, he said it was on the radar screen. What I thought was interesting is that the house was three, broken up into three different units. Two of the units were not inhabitable and that the owner of the property lived in New Baltimore. And when I asked what street it was, when I checked on it, that street where they lived doesn't have any multi-unit houses on it. So I thought, why do we have to have them? So we need to address that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill.
I'm the one that made the remarks about the raise in the millage at the last meeting and it was certainly not my intention to rub salt in anyone's wounds. I realize this is a very sensitive subject for many people. I was hoping that my remarks would help people realize the additional things we're going to be able to do with the additional money and possibly help people feel a little bit better about the extra money they're paying. But it was certainly not my intention to, to rub salt in anyone's wounds. Anyway, moving along, about two years ago, my husband, Tom, and I took advantage of free CPR classes offered by the Mount Clemens Fire Department. And as part of the class, we learned to perform CPR on both adults and infants and we learned to do the Heimlich maneuver. Whenever I have taken a CPR class, I always have secretly hoped that I never have to use it. However, quite recently, I happen to need to receive the Heimlich maneuver, also referred to as an upward thrust. I was taking a vitamin and evidently the water I swallowed went down the wrong pipe and I suddenly could not breathe or talk or cough. And it was a very scary experience. But fortunately, my husband remembered the training that we got from the CPR course and did the Heimlich maneuver on me. He had to do it twice. The first time he was a little bit too low, but the second time he did it, what was blocking my breathing popped out and I was able to start breathing again. So I was extremely grateful that he remembered that training and also grateful that we had received the training. So I just want to recommend to anybody who hasn't taken a CPR class recently, to please sign up and take one, because you might be able to save the life of somebody that you know and, or even you don't know. Since I have shared this experience with some of my friends, different people have told me how they ended up using the Heimlich maneuver on somebody. One lady told me that there was a little boy choking in the restaurant that she was in and she was able to go over and do the Heimlich maneuver and save him. And that she had also had occasion to use it on a relative. Anyway, I've heard several very dramatic stories about this, so I really want to recommend to people that you, you do take a CPR class and, and learn how to do this if you don't already know. The Mount Clemens Fire Department offers free CPR classes to all Mount Clemens residents. So if you are interested in this, please call the fire department at five eight six four six nine six eight four oh to sign up. Other than that, I hope everybody is managing to stay cool in this very warm weather. I hope everyone has a great evening and a good week.
Thank you. Commissioner Raker.
I'd like to congratulate Pam Sordell and the Puppy Mil, Puppy Mill Awareness Organization. They have fought an uphill battle for years coming before this commission. Granted, it wasn't an act of legislation that changed, it was basically their creating the awareness that drove that business out of Gibraltar arguably. And that's the power of advocacy. So I encourage anyone that is that convicted in a just cause to throw your energy behind that and congratulations to them. I also thought that Commissioner Mensah, you had a very innovative suggestion today in regards to generating awareness as to what's going on around town. And I think that maybe with the help of the DDA, that could potentially come to fruition. So thank you very much for that suggestion. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
I too am very happy about the Humane Society being able to work with the Puppy Mill Awareness and change the whole atmosphere at the Gibraltar Trade Center. I think that that's a wonderful thing. I would like to talk about these two interesting and unique events that the DDA is planning. The Bikes Burger and Brew with a collaboration from the County Planning and Economic Development Department and the Murder Mystery that's going to be in partnership with Clinton Township. The collaboration between cities and the county, I, I think is a wonderful thing. It brings new events, it brings efficiencies, it brings economies of scale and, and, and I am very much for that. I'd like to say thank you to the MCFD for training us. I was in the class with Commissioner Hill and her husband and they have been maintaining a list of people who are interested in the, in the CPR training. So give them a call. We're glad you're still here, Commissioner Hill. And I wanted to talk about where I've been in the city in the last month or so. And of course, my favorites, Three Blind Mice, Bath City Bistro. I have to admit to you, I have been to Weirdsville Records and Paperback Writer. And I have to admit to you that I did go to Champagne Chocolates and buy chocolates again, my downfall. And I'd also like to give a shout out to the Mount Clemens High School. For those of you that are interested in football, their first game is at seven PM, August twenty-eighth, against Detroit Southeastern. Their, Mount Clemens High's four, two thousand fourteen record was four and five, so that's at, that game's at home. Please go out, sit in the stands, give them some support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
Okay. I'd like to also congratulate the animal activists for their persistence. You know, it wasn't so much that they had legislation, legis, legislature behind them, but it's a matter of fact that, that they were persistent. They continued to press the issue until the issue was resolved. And I think that's the thing that I would like to encourage each of you out there. If you have a situation that you know needs to be addressed and you have to keep going at it. Now, there are two people in our audience right now that have been doing that for a month and almost, probably years, that have been pursuing a certain issue, but you can't give up. You have to keep pushing the issue until it's resolved. And they did that and I congratulate them for it. Also, the Mount Clemens High School, this past Thursday, had a grand affair whereas they, they, they had registration for students and they had just a, a lot of different activities at, at the school and it was a grand affair. The education process here in the city. I, I would also like to mention my loss of Gary Blash, who used to sit right here at my right-hand side. I, I could always count on him to give me a good, honest answer. I could always count on him to give me an unbiased answer to any question that I had or any question that the public had. He always had the city first in mind and I congratulate him for that. I didn't always agree with everything he had to say, but you know, when we disagreed, we respectfully disagreed and we moved right on. You're going to be greatly missed, but you know what? I, I hope I still have the opportunity and the avenue to call you and talk to you about city business and I hope that I also still have that avenue to call you and talk about your good health or your well-being. So may God bless you and keep you with good health and long life. Gary, we miss you. With that, oh, I got my Commissioner Wisdom. Can't do that. Ah, which one, the one, you know what, I'm going to use one of a little lighthearted. It says, "You can't put a price on love, but you can on all of its accessories." Think about that. Have a good night.
Thank you. This evening on our consent agenda, we had asked to change the parade date. This is a big undertaking and I want to make the announcement tonight that the parade, which usually falls the day after Thanksgiving, has been changed to the Saturday before Thanksgiving. So the tree lighting is the Friday night before and then the Santa Parade will be that Saturday. The committee decided that over the years, it's been ten years since I've chaired it and the committee members have been on ten years, we think that we will get more participation, more volunteers. Over the years, we've seen our volunteers kind of dwindle a little bit because it is a holiday weekend. I know that everybody on the committee has not had an opportunity to spend Thanksgiving and the day after with their family. They're out here early in the morning and we think we're going to get more bans because the schools are still in play, otherwise they're gone. So I know this is going to be a big change, we're going to get a lot of, we're trying to do a lot of press on this to make sure that everybody's aware that it is going to be the Saturday. We are going to, along with the DDA, we're working with them to come up with a really neat theme for that whole weekend, make it a Mount Clemens-type weekend, that we're looking forward to doing that. So I just, everybody note that it's November twenty-first instead of the day after Thanksgiving. So we hope to see all of you there and like I said, we're looking for volunteers. I don't know, Lois, do you have anything, you're on the committee, anything that you need to add to that?
I don't think so. I'm glad you, you brought it up though.
It's, it's going to, we're going to have to get it out there because every, for four, this is our fortieth year. So it's forty years of down-home tradition that we want to keep going. We're only changing the date, we're not changing the parade. So I just wanted to make that very clear and please, those of you who have Facebooks, please put it out there. We'll have a link to the DDA Facebook, share it. Do as much as you possibly can to get the word out because we are going to need that information to get out there. So with that, I need a motion to go into exec session. One, for the discussion of attorney-client privileged correspondence and two, for the annual city manager's performance evaluation. So I need a motion.
I move to go into executive session.
For.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Whenever you're ready, you ready? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.